I'd like to call and order this Board of County, Board of County Commissioners Tuesday, September the 2017 at 5:30 PM. I'd like to have the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk Callroll.
Commissioner Katnick.
Present.
Commissioner Hood.
Present.
Commissioner Prince.
Present.
Attorney Clint Smith.
Present.
And Clerk to the Board Kelly Camper, present.
Okay. On the agenda tonight, I'm going to suggest we make some amendments to the agenda. I would like us to maybe, well, the Dianne's introduction, but I would then like to skip the approval of the minutes, and Commissioner Iden and so forth, and move down to the new and old business at this point, which is the presentation by the building assessment report. Does anyone have any problems if we do this? The primary reason for our meeting tonight is that the, for the building assessment report, tomorrow we do have a Commissioners' meeting and what more, so I think to expedite things, I think it's, we can take care of that. Do I hear a motion? I'll make a motion that we amend the agenda as I suggested.
Second motion.
Move the second. Do I have a, on the Pecos Alley? Aye. Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Audience introduction, please.
Here, Dan Fisher. Dan here, Mr. Jack here, Mr. Clint Smith.
Very welcome. Tusto.
Thank you very much. Go ahead and introduce yourselves. Just let that's name on here.
All right. Jeffrey Wood, University of Colorado.
I'm Brittany Mueller from the University of Colorado.
Okay.
Weeley.
Thank you very much. I think we'll move on now to then the presentation by Jeffrey Wood. What was your name, Ms.? I missed it.
Brittany.
Brittany.
Brittany. If you would please, the floor is yours, and we'll let you go.
Thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate it. Just to give you a real quick introduction here, my name again is Jeffrey Wood. I'm with the University of Colorado at Denver, and I'm an architect, and I work in the Architecture Department, and Brittany Mueller will be speaking to us tonight as a graduate student in architecture. I did want to point out a couple of things. Our funding source to do this work is through the Department of Local Affairs, and I know Christie Culp, Christie Dune, was supposed to be here, and she ran into a problem and couldn't be here tonight, so she sensed her regrets, but Dole provides its funding as an outreach to rural, outlying communities that are considered underserved by traditional architecture outfits. We were contacted by the Board about a year and a half ago to provide an assessment of the county facilities, and we've kind of narrowed it down to the three buildings that we're going to talk about today, the Justice Center, I mean, excuse me, the courthouse, the Sheriff's Department, and the search and rescue were the things that we looked at, and trying to figure out what needs to happen and what opportunities exist within that. So without further ado, Brittany, I'm going to let you take over, and I'll try to just jump in and give them what they need.
So our assessment covered three buildings. Like Jeff mentioned, we looked at the current search and rescue building, the courthouse and county seats building, and then the Sheriff's Department and jail building. The search and rescue building, we found to be in pretty good condition. They did mention they had a couple of issues with inadequate power access when they were having larger rescue operations or fires, things like that. Their communication equipment and propane was exposed, so just handles and things like that were concerned. The ADA access was actually lacking to the upstairs area, which is where the office currently is, so if anyone with a disability was to hold that job, that would need to be addressed through them later. And then they do have some vehicles that are a little bit too large for their current garage, so an addition was an option, but the amount of space needed versus the cost was kind of something to consider.
Before you guys, one of the, Susan, you mentioned the propane stuff. I'm actually not sure what rules exist for this, but I do know that emergency generators have to be protected for essential services buildings, and if they have mentioned propane tanks, it probably should be addressed, because it seems like somebody could drive a truck if they were trying to do harm, they could drive something or shoot at it or something like that and caught his, like, bomb sitting there. And so we noticed that, I think, also at the Sheriff's Department as well, and so that was the one, the ADA compliance, somebody could ding you if there was an employee or something like that that was handicapped and needed full access, but the propane tank concerned me a little bit, that somebody could do some actual harm with that, so, okay, sorry.
Nope, you're just fine. So to tackle the ADA compliance for upper area, you could install an elevator, which is the pricier option, or some of those stair lifts could also be less expensive options should that come up. The garage clearance would have some structural implications for that addition, so depending on how bad you wanted it costed, that can be a factor. And then if a Star Trek grid would be doable, considering you guys get a little bit better access hopefully to Internet soon, but the electrical stuff is easily fixed, too, just adding additional outlets or hanging power points and things like that would make those operations a little bit more easy, but those are some low-end items. Given the condition of the building, it's overall in really good shape, so priority list in the county is doing pretty well compared to some of the other buildings.
I would say the ADA compliance is the thing that there's some legal exposure you have in terms of somebody complaining that maybe they can't take a job with the county. Yeah?
Can I address that a little bit?
Sure.
Since I'm search and rescue. The ADA compliant, the lower level is only a sheriff's compliant.
Yes.
And that includes the front area now, because I changed the thresholds.
Nice.
But could we not, since that's only an office, based on square footage, everything except that one office is ADA compliant?
Yeah.
Could we not have a system, I've used it before, is to have a doorbell, but if somebody comes in, they can move down, because that is not search and rescue's office up there. We work on the main floor, so they could use that facility.
Okay.
For the handicap, if they were to have one, it could be a system which rings the doorbell, "I can't come up there." You come down, leave the client, and use one of those offices.
You're absolutely right. I wouldn't, I don't think our recommendation is that you change anything right now. I just wanted to say, if, in fact, somebody was to seek employment for whatever does occur upstairs and said, "Hey, you know, I'm not being allowed access," they would have legal grounds to force your hand, as Brittany mentioned, having an informal railing-based lift would solve that if you had an employee. As far as somebody visiting the site, you're 100% right. The bathrooms met the criteria, everything was fine, but, you know, there are sadly, there are people that go around and make a living complaining about...
The county would just have another employee else.
Possible, yeah.
Sample for sure.
Right, well, it might be, you are under 400 square feet, I think, upstairs, so it counts as a mezzanine, which is why it didn't happen, but again, I don't know what the future holds.
I don't either.
The county just wanted them to be, you know, we were asked to do an assessment, so that's something, I wouldn't, I wouldn't race out to do anything, but if you, if you win the lottery, then maybe.
Larry, is it fair to say, though, that the garage space is an area that would be nice to have?
Well, it would be nice, I mean...
What, when I'm in real estate?
Yeah. It'd be nice if the county just turned it over to search and rescue. We wouldn't, we wouldn't have to deal with it, but that's just some of the stuff that happened. But as far as the base, you know, they were not intended for the type of equipment that we now currently own. They were more for what was left over from the Sheriff's Department or something, which was short SUVs and that kind of thing. They were not made for our full-length, three-quarter ton, one-time trucks with boxes on them and the emergency equipment, far as your winches and all of that, and, I mean, we make the facility work, and it's nice to have it. When I look at other areas, it's very nice. We redid the whole downstairs in the past two years. I mean, we soundproofed, rebuilt all the offices. It would be nice to have some of those power functions and the telecommunications part of it. In our area, the office is all right, but it'd be nice to have a later pathology, because we do get multi-agency things, and the county uses it as their OEC for fire, floods, whatever we might have happen, smoke, storms, or whatever. It'd be nice, some of our equipment is in trailers outside, and, you know, it's been a long struggle to get that equipment. We'd like to maintain it.
The garage, the vehicle garage was a, it's challenging, because unfortunately, to really make that garage work, really for the vehicles you have now, it's not much of a move.
No.
It's, it really seems like, you know, you have to move that wall 24 inches, 36 inches at the most.
Well, one of the vehicles is going to hopefully be worked, switched out, where we will have one to two feet get past it in the rear.
Okay. I mean, I guess what I'm thinking, if you needed 10 or 12 feet, or, I mean, or almost it's like, if you're going to build a new wall, it seems like you build it way out and actually gain room for storage or whatnot, but to really address the vehicle need, it's not that big of a delta, and it's kind of weird.
Yeah.
It's almost, feel sorry for them, like, gosh, just put that wall over there and start it, so, anyway, so that, as long as you can deal, make, you are making it work, so, you know, again, it's an issue, but not a huge problem, I wouldn't think, no, so...
Question I would have on the ADA access, this, let's put it as a search and rescue at this point in time, is this volunteer organization, so what do they have to provide for ADA where it's a volunteer group that's, that's not necessarily open to the public, versus the command center and so forth?
Well, I think you've got a couple of things that are working in your favor. First of all, I think like the Fire Department, I think it's generally considered true that somebody thought working in search and rescue is probably not going to be disabled in a wheelchair anyway, and I think that's a...
Well, you can have other kinds of disabilities, but Jeff?
I mean, there, every time you come up with a statement like that, you can find exceptions, but in general, like, the Fire Department doesn't have to provide access to all parts of the Fire Department, because they're generally considered, and I would think that search and rescue would be somewhat under the same umbrella. I'm not sure about the business, I mean, about the fact that it's volunteer versus, you know, open to the public kind of stuff. It's a gray area. Like I said, I don't think, I don't think I would do anything until somebody actually actively complained, but you should be aware that if somebody actively complained and had a real gripe, it would be a thing you'd have to deal with. They would, they would have the advantage at that point.
It's also, well, when they access secure areas, so that...
Right, and it is, I mean, if you, one solution, as this gentleman said, move the county person somewhere else. Truth is, it is, if it was a storage mezzanine, I don't believe you'd have to do any of this stuff. And I think it was originally built to be that way.
Yeah.
And, and so that's why there is none of this, this accommodation, and somebody's really using it for their office. If it was me, you know, I mean, ask her, I would just let it go, but know that it exists in the real world, that someone could come in and say, "I've been given a job here, and I can't deny this job simply because I can't get upstairs," and that would be an accommodation I'd make. What are the odds of that happening? I just don't know. The county has a little exposure there, but I would actually, on the priority list, I would probably fix the vehicle garage before I fix the, fix the ADA compliance, and I certainly would do, I mean, I think when the upgrade of the electrical system and the communication system is probably something that you really should look at in terms of trying to accommodate, because I can't imagine, you know, if you did have an emergency where that was the limiting factor, that would be bad, you know, if you couldn't have proper communication, so, okay, sorry.
Good, all right. So for this building here, I noticed quite a few ADA violations. There wasn't a whole lot of space for the existing program that's going on in the building. Housing a courthouse as well as a county seat in this amount of space has been tight. The systems are a little outdated. Everything's not quite up to code mechanically laying, all that sort of stuff. There's a lot of security issues as well with egress points for jury, judge, and then courthouse folks, like, entry and everything like that, so we looked through the report that you guys have prepared previously as well, but there's quite a few things that we need to be done in the building as it is to get it off to code and ADA compliance and things like that. There would need to be a number of security updates, those can be pretty pricey. The infrastructure all needs upgrading, and then there's also restrooms to consider on the stairs, ramps would need to be installed on stairs, an elevator would need to be installed, or stair lift, all sorts of stuff, just to bring this up to courthouse stairs, so that's the trickier part versus the county seat would require for as much security.
Before you go, there's not a great place for an elevator in this building that would align both the third floor and the upper level, and it is, it's frankly, just, it's a kind of, I know that the, the people who did the previous assessment threw about $600,000 at the, at the problem, which is, because it's a problem, which really no, you'd have to configure things differently to even get the elevator to line up properly, or, gosh , fit, install two elevators, which would be a really strange thing to do. You know, our, our thought is, with regard to security, some of the security measures would involve changing the exterior of the building, which is problematic, given the historic nature of this, of the building, putting security vest, even the front, you know, you know, we have this, we have this beautiful building, which I believe is historically protected, and it is, if it isn't, it easily could be, and so, and then, of course, all judge, you know, egress, emergency egress for judge and jury and stuff like that, none of that stuff is, is, so there'd have to be a major addition to this building, which, you know, so, I'm sorry.
Other things that we don't have on here that we have to accommodate would also be meeting rooms for attorneys, but have to be a jury room, holding pods for prisoners, segregation for minors to adults, salary board, so forth.
Right, no, and I think, I think you're looking at an expansion of probably, what do we, what do we figure?
It was 23,000 square feet.
Yeah, like, close to 3,000 square foot of additional program to this building to really make it function, as per the underfunded courthouse mandates that we're dealing with, and so, okay, so...
We looked at three scenarios. Like Jeff just mentioned, you could look into doing about 3,000 square feet of an addition. We estimated it would run about $250 a square foot, that 2,300 square feet, and then to work on the existing building pieces of it, it'd be a partial renovation of about 2,500 square feet, and that would cost about 200 square feet, just with security and things like that. Another option would be fully renovate the courthouse and make the entire building courthouse program, but you would need to relocate your county offices and county program. That would run about $3 million, because you're renovating the whole 15,000 square feet. Or another option would be completely build a new courthouse, and that would run in the neighborhood of 4.8 million. The estimated square footage for that would be about 16,000 square feet, so this existing facility is pretty close to that if you chose to renovate this building. And then the county offices would stay in the existing building, we would just sort of take this over for the county, and the courthouse functions would move once that building was built. The negatives for the addition and the renovation pieces are you would need to rehome your, your employees here while that was going on, so you need to rent trailers and that sort of stuff, and that would run you about 72,000 negative, the 18 months that we just estimate that it would take to renovate or add on to the building.
Ask me, if 4.8 does not include land, it's just the building itself?
That is construction costs. That's not assuming any of the other contingencies.
Yeah, but there's actually, there's actually three or four of the things that would be on top of that. One is professional services, architecture, engineering, which I believe Dole would give a tier-one grant for, so that might not be as painful, but you also have to consider two things, staffing for the, for the new courthouse, and then furnishings for a brand-new building, and those things are not inconsequential. I think the assessment they already have done, essentially in the neighborhood of about $425 a square foot, which is how they, you know, we're really just looking at construction costs here. Dole will only grant on construction costs, and so those are the numbers that we're focused on, but it is not, we should, we do not want to say that this is soup to nuts, this is just getting a building built. I actually don't, I don't think this, any of these should be the way you should go, but we're going to get to that, but just so we know, this is just to lay out sort of what, this is based on what the assessment of a new courthouse from now to 25 years from now needs to be. To fully renovate this and turn this into a full courthouse to get to the 16,000 square feet that they're looking for, or something close to that, there is the unset thing that your county administrative offices need to go somewhere, and so we don't have that place for them, so that's, that's, and then the other thing, the top one there, to just try to piecemeal this together, renovate as best we can. The renovation costs, renovating an old building like this is a little bit of a Pandora's box. You may uncover things that you had not anticipated. Those costs are probably, apparently, I don't know.
I think we also would distinguish that we have two issues. We have a court-related issue, which underfunded courthouse will help with some of the costs and so forth, but they will not assist with any cost related regarding the county administration issuing, which is also another space limitation.
Yeah, so I, it's, it's complicated for sure, and, and this becomes, Dole will probably grant money on an addition, but probably won't grant money on an existing bill, I mean, it's a harder calculus to be sure, but we, you know, we wanted to look at it, you know, sort of an honest, I think some of the numbers that were thrown out in the earlier assessment were probably accurate, but included some other things that we're not talking about, and I don't want to be disingenuous here, I, we're really focused on construction cost, and, so, carry on.
So these are those prison houses that you were talking about. The partial renovation wouldn't be permanent, so it should be sort of a band-aid for now, but it would obviously accrue to some other expense. The median expense would be renovating the full courthouse, but again, that doesn't account for finding a new home for all the county programs, so that could pollute that, and then building a new courthouse, of course, would save you that 72,000 just in rehoming employees and things like that. You would need to find a new county seat, and you could keep everyone here for the duration of the construction. The Sheriff's Department, like Jeff mentioned, we noticed that there were propane tanks exposed, so that poses sort of a safety risk to inmates and staff. The ventilation in the building is actually incredibly poor. There's a lot of mold, there's a lot of water damage, the exterior is deteriorating, this is a hole in the roof, actually, that all sorts of critters are getting in and running around inside the ceiling, and there's some deterioration happening on the interior as well. The space that they're working with for their current program is completely insufficient. They have people that shouldn't be near staff and public that are currently being held in areas that aren't appropriate, and they're also having trouble separating victims and people that shouldn't be around the victims as well, just due to lack of space. The interview rooms aren't adequate, and then there's also a lot of safety concerns with the staff, the staff as well.
The booking, the area they use for booking is essentially the lobby in the middle of the room.
At the picture.
Which is, which is essentially the area that everybody who works in that building has to walk through. Defendants, witnesses, public wanting to, you know, talk to the police chief or the sheriff about something, the support staff, non-uniformed personnel, as well as officers themselves. It's a very strange thing. I'm surprised that they do not have a problem, actually, and it's, it's, it's that, it's that concerning, actually. People that are trying to go to the restroom might have to walk by somebody who's chained to a desk, which is problematic, so, okay.
So just to explain this picture a little bit more, this is their main area, so all the offices border this sort of area here. They have the booking desk here, blocked office and file cabinets, and then there's a water fountain and a bathroom to the left here, and that's where they do all the urine collection, things like that, and then they have the sample sit by the sink, but that's also the staff break area, so someone could be making their lunch, and they're right next to some unfortunate things, and...
This is a restraint.
Also have someone restrained while you're trying to make your lunch, so, and there's administrative folks that are here that are also in earshot and eye shot, and they're worried about someone coming in just off the street with fingerprints, and these people could maybe get loose and get a whole little, like, don or something like that, and it's just, it's a bad, a bad situation. There's also a lot of privacy concerns, sound really carries in there, there's not really any areas to have private meetings, so that's sort of to toe you in the legal territory there. With this building, we did look at a lot of the same options, however, some of the safety concerns, just due to the building and the way it is, wouldn't be necessarily resolved with a renovation or an addition.
It's, if you don't, if you don't, it was converted, I was thinking it was a truck repair facility, so it's been, it was never intended to be a sheriff's office, so we shouldn't put it down too much, but it's doing its job at this point, but I think, anyway, I think that there's a much greater need there than there is here, although the state is probably telling you to forget about your sheriff's department, so, go ahead.
Sure. So, looking at a renovation of that space and a partial addition, so an 1,800 square foot addition would give them another pod to generate revenue, and that would also give them an extra, like, 300 square feet to work with for offices or things like that. We budgeted that again at $250 a square foot, and then a renovation of quite a bit of the building, 2,500 square feet again, would come in just under $1 million, so that would take care of a lot of the water damage, fix the roof, that sort of stuff. The full renovation of the Sheriff's Department plus adding two additional pods, so right now they just have one male pod, they don't have any female pods, and they don't have any pods to separate rival gang members or anything like that, which is a safety issue for prisoners as well. That would only run at 2.2 million, and that's for the full renovation plus an additional two pods.
What's the population in those two pods?
So they have one pod now, and it's housing 12 inmates, and it's generating about 8,500 a month for them. So adding two additional pods, you would just multiply that along, there's a slide there where we calculate that.
So you're multiplying from 12 to 36, so...
Yes.
It's important to note, I don't, I don't want to be in full disclosure mode here, that seems to have got filled out, that when, like, if you have, if you have two additional pods, and you're making, you're saying, oh, it's going to be $8,500 a month, well, that seems to have got sufficient prisoners from neighboring counties and whatever to actually populate that. The sheriff, who's not here, but, I mean, I'm speaking, we're speaking a little bit for him, he did say he thought that there was enough capacity in the surrounding counties and that that would not be a problem, but I don't, I don't necessarily think we should just say if we build it, it's like a month, it's like an 18 every month, that's probably not right, yes, no, yeah.
Well, we're sending our female clients to Fremont County as we speak, so...
Right, so it's costing probably something like $8,500 a month or something like that. Yeah, so those are, that, again, that's not the list that we have to all kind of look at here, but the jail pods are the one area that we're talking about that's actually potentially revenue generating to the county, and, and so I think it's, it's important, as, no matter what moves forward, to sort of figure out what that sweet spot is, measuring the cost of construction versus the cost of return on dollars, but I also want to caution you that we are working with two other counties that want to do the same kind of thing, and eventually, we're probably going to get capacity. I mean, Casia County is building a jail, a big jail, and Mineral County is trying.
Puyallup County is trying.
Was that?
Puyallup County is a big deal.
Yeah, so, so at some point, I guess we all can hope that there aren't enough prisoners to go around, I, I don't know how, I don't know how else to say it, we, we don't really want to have people in jail, but, but at some point it's possible that we get capacity, but I don't know, that's for someone smarter than me to really figure out, but I just want to make sure we're all on the same page on that, so...
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
It seems to me that the new, where they have been able to do renovations or new construction, that the courthouse and the Sheriff's Department jail are all one building that are combined, and...
Pretty definitely.
So, that's where you're going?
That's where we're going to go, because I think that's, that's the solution that makes the most sense, because to build two different buildings, you have two different set...
You're not going to get in there. You're just ahead of you.
That was a good question, but one minute too early, but you're right, that's, I mean, that is, that is kind of the general direction that people are going, having a justice center, having a county seat in one building, justice center, and then whatever, so, go ahead.
So the new Sheriff's Department, again, you could house your people in-house until the department was finished. We assumed 12,000 square feet. We assumed 12,000 square feet for a new sheriff's department, just to give them sort of room to grow. And then, that would include four pods with that cost. And then, we estimated 350 square feet, just because the pod construction actually is a little more expensive due to construction and security.
So we're going from 4,300 square feet to 12,000?
Well, a lot of it's going, three pods rather than more.
The pods are about 1,500 apiece. So, four pods is 6,000 of that. So the current sheriff's department is right around, I think, 37.
But yes, we are.
Yeah.
Because this is the holding.
We're looking at one deal up here for a million dollars, we're looking at another for 2.2, and another for 4.
But again, it's, it's, it's a Band-Aid versus a 10-year lease or something.
You know, what I'm saying, we're looking at the options.
Of course.
And the square footage we have, it's a big deal.
Yes, it is.
You're right.
Yeah.
We don't actually think you should do this either.
Pardon?
We don't think you should do this either. This isn't, this solution you should follow either, so we're going to get to that, so.
So, for the renovation and addition, the full renovation, the issue there should be losing the revenue from the jail folks, as well as having to pay to house all the sheriff's department employees. So, that would actually net you almost 200,000 in the negative for 18 months, assuming that's the duration. Again, the lease expensive is not a permanent fix, but it is on the lower end of the spectrum. The three pods would help you with the gang member separation as well as working in a situation. But you would still need to account for the space after the construction, and then the new build would give you just a longer-term solution. But that would be, again, standalone. So we're looking at, I think, around 11 million for the two buildings combined at this point?
Actually, yeah, it's about nine, actually.
I'm sorry.
4.1, 4.2. Let me just stop right there, because I do want to add a couple of things. The, the numbers we threw out, the square footage numbers, we're sort of approximating what you need. We didn't really program, I mean, we sat down and figured out amongst ourselves what we really wanted to do, but I do want to caution, we said, I think the new build, new sheriff's department was 12,000 square feet. I think you could do that for less, but we are, at this point in time, looking at that 25-year lifespan. Like, what is the building you need for 25 years from now? I don't know that you can afford that, meaning, at some level, we also know that our charge here is to sort of figure out what, how can we get there? It would be great if you had $9 million sitting around, build, build a courthouse, build a sheriff's department. That's a lot of money to come up with. If you did two separate buildings, Dola, the most they're coming in is 4, 2 million dollars per building, and so that leaves a $5 million fundraising gap here. So we get that as being sort of kind of a problem. What you mentioned about combining into a justice center is important, because now you can have restrooms that are shared, you can have equipment rooms that are shared, you can have lobbies that are shared, you can have security that is shared, you can have, you don't have to build holding cells in the jail, because you already have holding cells, I mean, holding cells in the courthouse, like we were talking about having to do here, because you've already got holding cells because it's a jail. And you've got interview rooms and all this kind of stuff. And you don't have to worry about prisoner transport or anything like that. So there's a lot of advantages to combining them. And so, we took some liberties with the square footage that we gained, but I think that we used sound judgment, so we'll get to that. Do you have a question?
Yeah, the comments you made of what can you afford now? If I look at this building, over there, it's been here almost 100 years. And then, we had an addition, and then we had a second addition, which is about 25 years ago, I think, was the last one. So they've enabled each time to increase the lifespan by about 25 years. If we look at construction costs today to do this, versus what construction costs are going to be in 15 years to expand it, chances are, during the history of how construction costs continue to go up, it'll be much less of a burden, the sooner we can, we can provide a facility, the less of a financial burden to the taxpayers. We're just postponing and increasing the additional bill down the road.
I agree with you. I just think as a, I mean, I think as a taxpayer, sometimes it becomes, becomes sort of an abstract issue to say, well, you should fund something that you may not actually need all of for 25 years. Like, for instance, I think in the assessment that they did for this building, they said that you should build a building that has two court, two full courthouses, meaning two full judge chambers. How often is this courtroom used?
Probably 90% of the time.
So it is full, full of all the time? Okay. So you need two courtrooms? That's possibly true, then? Okay. So that's, okay. Well, that's, that's relevant information, and I mean, it's, it's, but are you seeing, is it going like this, or is it steady state? I mean, are you, it's going up, okay. All right? Well, the numbers might be a little low.
Okay. So, as promised, the jail revenue, so the sheriff mentioned that they were making about $45 a day per inmate, and that was coming out to about 8,500 a month. And that isn't full capacity, that's just what they're averaging currently. They have 12 now that, and they have to ship the females out to another county. His recommended capacity was 30 males and 12 females, so that's what we assumed. But if you did four pods, that would go all the way up to 48, and we just worked with 42, so that would assume you have six vacancies in the pods. The potential income, if you work with the 8,500 a month ratio of inmates, would get you closer to 360,000 a year mark, and then, if you were at full capacity, you would be closer to the $680,000 mark a year. So as far as revenue, that's a pretty significant source available, but the construction cost, the initial investment would be significant.
And there are costs associated with that as well. You've got more guards, you've got kitchen stuff, there are, you know, the more inmates you have, it's not just charging people for nothing. It actually does, there's, it's not just free money, but there, you know, so.
It also depends on demand, and that's probably not going to be a 25-year... When we look at the expansion of facilities up and down, this, the demand, it's probably going to be different in five years than it is today because of all the additional county construction taking place.
But do you think it's going to be less or more?
I think you're going to see more total cells, and they, oh, look, look at Puyallup County, they're increasing the number of their cells by about 300 beds or something?
Okay, but, yeah, but are you, I mean, I was not being glib, I mean, there are other counties adding capacity, but if your, your population is, is rising in this county, right? And unfortunately, I don't know if crime is rising or not rising, but it's, it seems like it's a...
It's just the thing that scares me. The state went into expanding facilities, and we went into the private prisons and so forth, and there's a lot of, a lot of that space was initially designed as cells that had to be converted to other issues.
Yeah.
And I see that that couldn't possibly happen at the county level. Not there.
My, my thought, really the hybrid idea there also is that, I think, if you're paying money to send females to another county, it might be good to have a male and a female pod, if you will, and maybe design the jail, lay it out in such a way that there's future expansion for one or two pods, and then, if the demand really is there, then you can come back and revisit it, because this is actually something that, if it doesn't pay for itself, it's going to probably pay for itself over 10 years at some level, if the, if the demand keeps up that way. I mean, you're not liking that idea?
No, I just look at a county jail as a, as a county facility that's necessary to serve the needs of the county, and if you can bring in some outside, that's fine, but the primary purpose of a county cell, of a county jail, is housing for the inmates required in that county.
Right. And I actually don't know from a day-to-day basis how much the sheriff, how, what percentage...
I don't like it, that's too far.
Yeah. Right, okay. But I think it's worth talking about, and that probably is, at some level, your eventual charge is to figure out what, what that number is.
Wouldn't it be cheaper long-term, if you're going out 25 years and planning, to look at building your shell, and depending on your needs at the time, to designate the space, you may change what that designated space is going to be, which is when you're actually building a shell, it's going to be cheaper in the long run.
Well, certainly, that's true, that you're building it now, in today's dollar, it would be cheaper, but if, if you found out down the road that you didn't need those other cells, it would be money you spent for, I don't know, I mean, a sheriff's department is such a specialized function, even taking the existing building, if you abandoned it and built a new sheriff's or a new justice center, I don't know what you'd do with jail cells. They don't, they don't actually have it. Actually, there are some that used some nice ones in this whole building here, the, the offices up front here, there's some, some nice ones. They're using the old jail cells as offices.
I hope we don't have to do that in the future.
Yeah. They're kind of cool in their way, but, but, but it's, you, it's, you're right about it. If you are, are wanting to go ahead and, and basically put the stake in the ground, say this is it, what we're going to do, you'd want to weigh that versus the potential cost of just having a design for additional pods later on, so that circulation all works, so it's more like plug-and-play. Five years from now, 10 years from now, you said we do need two more pods, and they can just be built standalone, that would all fit within the existing construct of the building. You know, I don't know, that's, you want to weigh which is the cheaper way.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not necessarily talking about additional pods in the beginning, I'm just saying space. Because the sheriff is saying he doesn't have the room to have certain programs to help those prisoners as we speak.
I know a lot of universities are building shells, and then they're finishing the floors as they can. It may take five or eight or nine years to be fully finished, but they have the initial shell constructed.
Hey, Jackson.
Yeah?
If you could set up the infrastructure of that building where you could have those pods put in, I hate to say this, but the state of Colorado Penitentiary builds pods that aren't ill cells that you can set in there. They've actually built a bunch up for other prisons in other states.
Yeah, that's true.
And they're all, you know, you can put a design together, and then you add them, as you need them, and then you'll steal with everything that's needed in them, and you just start stacking them.
Yeah, no, the jail cell expansion is a thing that I think is, that's the one area that could be done fairly standalone. I think, thinking about sheriff's offices and, you know, all the space that goes with the support, and, and obviously with courts and stuff like that, we really want to get that under control and built properly for what we think the next 20 to 25 years is going to need. The jail, if the building is laid out properly on site, the jail should be something that's additive rather than something that's just sort of fixed, right? You know? Anyway, that's not perfect, but I think it does, it is an area that is easily expanded.
Did you want to copy this, just an extra copy there?
So this is, this is what we were talking about before. So, the hybrid of the sheriff's department and the courthouse functions would be in a justice center. So with that comes a lot of, from my program like Jeff was talking about, there's a lot of efficiencies in doing that, as well as, you don't have to use as much land, you don't have to go through two grant cycles, all of that stuff. We budgeted 15,000 to 18,000 square feet. Given what you mentioned with the two courtrooms and things like that, we'd probably be closer to that 18,000 mark. So we're looking at 4.5 to 5.4 million, and that's what the construction cost of 300 square foot. The county seat renovation, if you go forward with the new justice center, we thought that you could, can get you to use this building as it is now, and the sheriff's building as it is now, and then once the justice center's finished, the sheriff's department employees can move in, and then the courthouse employees can move in, and then this would become the county seat. So you would have that 15,000 square feet available for those functions. In the previous report that was done, estimated about 12,000 to 13,000 square feet worth of program that would be needed for a county seat function, so this would do really well with that, given the story around that 12,000 square foot mark. The renovation for this building, due to the, you wouldn't need as much security infrastructure and things like that, so we estimated closer to 100 square feet, or, I'm sorry, $100 a square foot for the full 15,000 square feet, so that would put you in at about 1.5 million to renovate this building, and that would take care of those ADA issues and things like that. And then, the sheriff's department, you guys would have it available to repurpose. I saw that you could put additional county offices in there, you could sell it, lease it, just whatever you guys saw that to do in that situation, but it would be available for some new ideas.
Inflow of money rather than outflow of money.
Yes, exactly.
Right now, we've got a building that really isn't meeting the human needs for those who are over there working.
The sheriff's department?
Right, yes.
Yes, the jail is the worst part of it, though.
So we look at, we look at the functions of it, a lot of the people, they were still going to do something, maybe, do small spaces.
You would potentially need to renovate some of the interior spaces, definitely. It does have a new roof, it would need some exterior improvements, definitely, and then if you wanted a very, or paint tank or things like that, just for safety.
You're 100% right, though.
But yes, you would need.
It wouldn't just be plug-and-play that it'd be, we don't know who would go in there. I don't know if the building would have any value to somebody who wanted to buy it. It's on county property, so it might be difficult to actually sell. I don't know if you could lease it to somebody, I don't know if there's a market for that kind of stuff, so we didn't really know. It would sit there empty at this point.
Empty, for storage.
Yeah, for storage, yeah. So, I, I don't have a really good idea how to reuse a jail. We did, we would have loved to come up with something sharper, but we didn't know what the needs were.
I'm a, I'm a little bit confused. Back several slides ago, we talked about scenario three, a new courthouse building at 16,000 square feet, about 4.8 million. And then we come here, we talk about a justice center with potentially even 1,000 square feet less.
Yeah. Well, okay, so I, that was what we were talking about. I took some liberties. My thought is, again, with the courthouse situation, would be to design a building that had an easily expanded second courthouse, but do we need that courthouse right now? If you need two courthouses, we're definitely in the higher number. I was trying, my goal in an assessment is kind of recognizing how to get you close to a number that is tolerable. I'll do my math backwards. Dola will grant a two, will provide a $2 million grant, and with some, maybe some Homeland Security money and some other sources, maybe some USDA money, let's say you had 4.5 million dollars you could spend. What kind of building can we get for that? Could we get a sheriff's department, 8,000 or 9,000 square for the sheriff's department, and 8,000 or 9,000 square for the courthouse? And remember, they're going to be using some of the same facilities, there's going to be equipment rooms and, and, and restrooms, and you're not going to have to have separate holding cells, so there is some economy of scale here. We didn't program out the whole building, honestly, we, we were just trying to come up with a, with a route to get us there.
What do you call an county seat? An administrative building?
Right, yeah. That's the, the financial treasurer, the human services.
So they're a military building, because the county seat is really the town it's located in.
I see what you're saying.
What I'm going is that we need to separate this as the administration.
Administration.
And this is court facilities. We, we refer to this as a courthouse.
Right. That's what it's always been referred to correctly.
Right.
Well, we're saying we're separating, but we're also thinking of trying to use, put this on the same piece of land, actually, ironically, there's somebody out there weighing a truck right around here. I've never been here when there's a truck on this cable, so, but I, we were actually thinking that, that having this building adjacent out there, back, am I pointing in the right direction? Back there, sort of between the sheriff's building and that stuff. Again, the other, I mean, you're quite correct in saying, we took some, some liberties with square footage here, to try to get a palatable number here, to sort of say, what, what can we do? If, you know, to, to sit down and say, well, you know, without having restrooms in both buildings, without having equipment rooms in both buildings, communication rooms in both buildings, a common lobby, not having the holding cells and everything you'd have to have in a courthouse, there's a net savings there. Is it 2,000 square feet? I'd say that's probably in the range that we're talking about saving. I also, like I said, I was assuming maybe we could get by with one courthouse for now and expand to a second courthouse, like...
When you talk about courthouse, you mean courtroom?
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Courtroom, yeah. Courtroom. Yeah. And I didn't realize that the usage was that high, so I mean, that's, obviously, that's something we need to think about. If we're, I mean, that we're, again, I'm trying to work backwards, you know, 4.5 million dollars seems like an attainable number. What can we, can we get close to that? Are there going to be some trade-offs to get to 4.5, to get that done? Absolutely. Absolutely. But I think we have a safe jail and a proper courthouse in that square foot, which is what I'm really, that's what I'm trying to get to. So, without having programmed it, instead of sort of really, we did meet with the sheriff, we talked about what his needs were, we reviewed the assessment that the other folks did in terms of the court. I think that they're, what were they calling for, 16,000?
16,000, but that was two courtrooms, really large entry areas.
That's a big courthouse.
They were being very jaded.
My question is, do they, did they really program that with you, or did they, did that, was that just a number they pulled out of the courthouse building book? Because that is, that's a lot of court, that's a lot of area.
We sat down, we went through a whole list, we probably spent a total three or four hours about, and said, okay, five years, 10 years, 25 years, what do we have here? What's this, what's good, what's bad, what's space, what's need? How much, how much more space is our park going to need as things grow, as we add more people, or whatever? And that's how we kind of, you know, we took the parts and then kind of melded the parts into what we felt was a realistic demand, at least.
It seems like a lot, and it seems like a lot of square footage, and it seems, again, that, you know, $300 or $400 per foot we're talking about.
Seems like a lot over 25 years.
Yeah, you're not wrong. I'm not, I'm trying to, I'm just trying to be appreciative. I'm trying to be like, how can we map a path out to get there? If money was no object, obviously, we'd rather have a bigger facility or something like that. I think, I think the sheriff's department can, can be dealt with as is, meaning they're, if we gave them 9,000 square feet with the ability to expand into different pods, I think that they're, they're okay there. So then the question is, can we get the courthouse facility done for 10, 9 or 10, or, you know, maybe not, maybe 12,000, maybe it's going to be 20,000 square foot building? I do, I do think that there's, as I said, an order of scale that is appropriate to think about, and that's the advantage. I'm actually not trying to sell, I'm not trying to actually tell you what to do. I think that there is a wise course of combining these two uses, because if you build a new courthouse, whatever you do, you're still going to have a jail, a sheriff's department sitting over there. So with the resources we can muster, we need to think of a way to combine these two uses in as small a footprint as possible. Probably one story, so we can avoid ADA problems and elevators and stuff like that, and with as many shared facilities as possible between the two. That gets you something close to your goal.
One thing I'd like to point out also, as far as courtrooms, they don't have to be identical courtrooms. You need one, a good size for actual jury trials, but 95% of court activity does not involve juries. You don't need a jury room, you don't need a jury box. You have a much smaller room for the day-to-day activity that our county judge normally does, and that would be savings considerably.
Yeah, okay, so that's, I mean, you know, when you're, when you're really sitting down to tear it down, because I, I do think the architects have helped with the assessment, I do think it's really wise to start with the pine, like, let's, let's deal with everything, and then look how much, you know, what do we really need, and then start whittling away. Do you really need two full courthouses, or can you get away with courtrooms, or can we get away with a large and a small? That's, that's the good kind of information we need to get to.
Are you also aware that the city, the town Westwood uses our court facilities?
I'm not aware of that, but that's, I mean, that's good information to have, but, but does that contact, you said that it's used 90% of the time, and I'm assuming that means that's part of that 90%, right?
Yeah, they will have a whole lot of general.
Okay, well, and so I think that there's, yeah, I mean, like I said, I'm just trying to be putting an optimistic spin on it, because otherwise, what we're really looking at is trying, we build two separate buildings, we're talking about, you know, 4.8 and 4.2 million-dollar buildings, really. You know, whole hog, 16,000 square foot courthouse, 12,000 square foot sheriff's department, and that's a construction cost of $9 million without putting a single chair or desk in any of those buildings. And I kind of know that that's going to be a pretty steep uphill fight, and I know that you're feeling pressure to do something to this building, but I'm telling you that that building is worse. That's, that's our assessment, if I can sum it up in a, and so somehow, we need to somehow bring these two things together, so. And the only thing I can think about is trying to share restrooms and meeting rooms and that kind of stuff along the way. It's not perfect, but it doesn't probably give you every single thing that you want, but I think it's a map to get to where you can actually be. Does that make sense?
Having gone through a lot of $850,000 renovation for a building and looking at what we maybe could have gotten for 500,000 new.
Renovating is hard.
It makes us a little cautious.
And renovating is fraught with peril. Every contractor that comes in here and signs a contract is going to have a lot of stuff that they haven't seen, that every time they uncover, they're going to say, hey, you need, we uncovered this foundation, it needs to be repaired, there's wiring, the walls need to be replaced. There's going to be stuff that they hadn't thought of, and that's the nature of renovation. It's a beautiful building, and I think it should be very well used as the county administration building. And then you don't need to worry about jury and judge emergency egress and security and stuff like that, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Did we, did we get to the end?
Yeah, I mean, we talked all of these.
Okay.
The prison pods.
We'll go to the next of the lot.
Do you guys have any questions or comments additional?
Well, I think for those of you here in the audience, you have about a, I don't know, what is this, four or five page handout that is a commentary, and going through that, I think that, I think these folks have done a good job of maybe laying out at least a half, talked through the issues that we've talked about here, and I think this explains a little more. It's a long road to go. We do know that we have to do two or three things. First of all, what is the most important, what's the most pressing, where do we have to be in five years? One of them is we have to increase our court facilities. The biggest criticism I'd like to have planted and address is also, if we look at the security in this room, sitting on this bench behind me, you're not really very secure in terms of access to the room, in terms of egress out of here, there's a lot of things that we have to consider, and that's what this first part would consider. Then when we look at the jail, and how many of you here in the audience have been over through the jail? Have any of you had a chance to, you've been through it? So you understand what we're talking about in terms of some of the shortcomings and some of the issues that need to be addressed. And those are issues that sooner or later have to be addressed. If not, they're going to come back and bite us. The concept of a justice center, I think you've done a nice job of encapsulating that there is some cost savings there, whether you put it out side by side or stack them. You can, an opportunity gives you a chance to do some things. Also, having the two facilities connected, if you need to have additional meeting room or for something else, for one or the other purposes where they are connected, you may have that flexibility. We do have a problem with security between our, right now with our male pod, was if we have juveniles and adults, we have to segregate them, or they don't have that option right now. The reason we no longer have a female pod over there is because of space restrictions. Our communication center was totally non-functional, as we were, it was barely getting back where we were, they were sitting on top of each other, and in the short term, the most attractive alternative appeared to be moving our communication center back to where the female pod was, and I assure you, the female pod was much coarser than what the male pod is, and they will build the old room back there.
Yeah.
But those are all considerations we have to deal with, and I don't know down the road if we're going to have more and more county employees in a building as an administrative building, or are we going to be doing more and more stuff electronically on the cloud where we have remote locations? I don't know where that's going to go, but again, that's another possibility, is space demands.
When we, when we were walking around the building, I'm sorry, I will say that, that we found some people, we met with all the departments in here, and everybody has little minor things that they could, you know, storage being one of the, probably the overall thing. In general, the administration offices seem to work pretty well. People are not, you know, they're not that upset with their space, I mean, they work, they could be better. But I don't know that I would throw a ton of, I would not anticipate throwing, needing to throw a ton of money every working space, with the exception of the elections department, which is probably the next.
Which department?
The election registrar or, does it handle, is it the registrar that you work? The clerk, sorry. So the election stuff, you know, I know that there's pressure from, you know, the watchdogs of the election people that are probably going to say you need to do some other stuff there, but, you know, the other, the treasurer said, yeah, this is fine, I've got a nice safe, I, you know, and everything. So like I said, there's tweaks, but it didn't seem amazingly deficient. The deficiencies were in the courtroom function, and as you said, the security of the building. The security, I mean, this is a county administration building, which should in fact be open to the county residents, this should be their building. The courthouse is a little different, it needs to be a little bit more secure and a little bit more tightly wound, as it were. And so having this function, it worked in the old days, but now with, with security needs being what they are, courtrooms are not really well-suited to being with, with county administration offices, but they are well-suited to being with sheriffs and jails, so for better or worse.
I think we have two or three areas that I'm concerned for space. First of all, is our human services and jails in that area, but we need spaces, we need rooms for them to work with.
They did say that, they needed more meeting rooms.
We've got them awfully close together in terms of work efficiency.
No, they said they have some privacy issues.
I think our, our, you know, I agree with our treasurer area, but we look at our veteran service office, we have it across the street over here, the facilities there are a whole lot better than we have, but they're not what we need yet. That's going to be another area to look at for expansion. There's, you know, the commissioners, we, you've seen our commissioners.
Yeah.
Be nice to have a room even half this size.
I'm trying to give you this room.
You know, but, but again, in this case, probably if this wouldn't be feasible, if this were even available, we have enough demand for, for space for county, for just for a meeting room. Excuse me, go ahead, Tim.
I have a question for Jeff. When we were talking about like the full, full renovation of the courthouse and the reno to the jail, we're looking, we're looking at five plus million dollars just to reno these two buildings.
Right.
Okay, it seems to me that, that we gain for about the same amount of money, but you mentioned that, you know, like for the DOLA grants, that there'd be, you know, maybe $2 million for this and $2 million for that, but join together to build a justice center, would that money, those, those DOLA grants be basically doubled into, because it would make sense, to me anyways, to do the justice center. If you do the justice center with the courthouse and the jail, like you said, it's got the multiple functions for both there, then this becomes, this whole space becomes open for more administrative offices, and then the sheriff's office again becomes open to become another office space, let's say, for county services. So, but my question with really, the DOLA grants, I mean, does it get cut in half, or does it? Well, it's for more grants available if we build the justice center than if we just do a reno here, a reno there.
You, you asked a really, a really great question, actually, and I, I'm not going to be able to give you an answer that's fully committed, but I would say, we even talked about this on the way up, if, if you're just looking at grant money, you're probably better off building two buildings, because they're going to say, we'll give you $2 million for sheriff's building, and then we'll give you $2 million for a courthouse. That's $4 million. You build one building, they're going to say, we're going to give you $2 million for your building, because that's kind of the way they roll. Now, I think, just listening to you ask the question, it occurred to me that a really clever architect would come up with a way of, of doing them phase one and phase two, and, and doing, and then having, and doing them exactly like, like trying to get to double dip, if you will. And they've still, though, it's important to note, DOLA will still only give you a match, meaning if you raise a million, they'll give you a million. If you raise 2 million, they'll give you 2. So if you did get $4 million in match money, that would imply at some level that you came up with $4 million for your own. So, but I, but I think it's worth asking. Now, the problem with DOLA also, they, they pay our fees and everything like that, but I do not work for DOLA and don't answer for them, so I think it's important that I note that. But they're also, depending on the grant cycle you're in, there's going to be other projects that they may or may not deem, sometimes yours might be the most worthy, and you get all the money you asked for, or sometimes there's others that are more pressing, and you get some of the money you asked for. So there's a little spurious nature to that. I don't want to, I don't want to just imply that they've got the money sitting behind the door and they're just going to reach back and say, here you go. So that, there's a little uncertainty there. So, but, but if in fact it all unfolds that way, I think, I think there's a chance that you could look at perhaps doing a phase one and phase two, because they will be separate. I mean, the courtroom, there will be, I'm talking about intertwining some of the stuff, but there's going to be a, you're not going to have courtroom functions amidst the jail cells and stuff like that. There are going to be two wings of the same building, so there's, there's possibly a way to do exactly what you're talking about, and that might actually be a better way to go just in terms of the county finances as well, so.
The DOLA money does vary, though, in our Quatmore building, I think we had some money that was a 90-10 match, and we had some that was 50-50. It depends on a number of issues, but there, and the other thing with the underfunded courthouse, those funds can only be spent on a court facility. They cannot be spent on an administration facility or on a jail. It's a judicial partner. Madonna, Jim.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I wanted to say, as far as space goes, and I know you mentioned the treasurer doesn't need any space, but I'm going to speak on behalf of our IT department and our HR department, where we have to expand those, they're working out closets, you know, around the block.
Okay.
And I know Kelly's sitting right here, she's expressed interest of even being able to do our photo IDs, we don't have a spot.
Oh, there, you guys are up there in the, in the old jail cells, right? Am I right?
HR is in the old jail.
No, I'm the clerk. So we're there, but HR's in the jail cells.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, they're, I mean, they're crammed, but when you move the courthouse functions out of here, you are going to free up some space in, within this building.
Larry, you wanted to say something else?
Well, I'll just make a comment, with the period of time in the amount of additions and the retrofitting that's already been done, and I've been through other places, and I used to do that for a living for contractors, is when you go in there and you've tackled three or four additions over a period of 50, 60 years, you do not know what you're going to run into, and you may think you've got a good contract at a half a million, you're going to be lucky to get out of a million and a half, because I've done schools, I've done justice centers, and it is a nightmare. I mean, you ask an electrician to come in here right now, he's going to triple your fee just for the fact you ain't going to be able to find a panel without a bunch of reasons.
It's scary, this building.
Oh, it's.
Well, certainly, building a new building, whatever it's going to be, is going to be a more predictable cost.
Yes.
And anything you do to an existing building is going to be more problematic cost to guess at. So that's 100% true, that's why we're pushing you out the door and saying, do, do something back there, and, and, but, you know, I, again, I, I think it's, I think it's an easier nut to crack if you have this building, whatever it's going to be, that you go back there and build.
And the other thing, you know, there are other funding sources, LPR and a number of the foundations have put in, I'm not sure no member and I know, but probably, would you say, maybe $100,000 in that web, more billings, website grants?
25,000.
How much?
25,000.
25,000, okay.
And there's, there's USDA funds that you've tapped into, now USDA has some, you know, they have 0% loans, they do have some grants, their grants are harder to get, but they do have 0% 30-year loans and stuff like that, which, you know, it's still money you owe, but it's a little bit easier to tackle if there's no interest on it, so, yeah.
Another thing to keep in mind with that USDA stuff, this county grows another 300 or 400 people. Where we can get now is not what we're going to be getting when we get over that population now, because they cut it at 5,000 population. We're slightly under, and that is, it'll go long, the next census will probably kick us over the top of that, which means we no longer get that super small community break that we're going to get now, since it jumps over that, we end up in a higher category, so instead of 0, we might have 1%, but it's still a cost.
Right, yeah, and again, that money has to be paid back regardless, so I'm going to, but they do have grants, and so there's, I know from, not personally, but I know from talking to the DOLA representatives, that they, they complain bitterly about the processes that USDA makes you go through. I can only say that, that's all I can say about it, because I don't really know what that means really, but, and there are, I mean, I know that there's Homeland Security money for this kind of stuff, certainly to address some of the safety issues and, and stuff like that, there's. Certainly to address some of the safety issues and stuff like that, there's funding. I don't know if it's a huge amount of money, but you want to tap into everything you can, so.
Probably the next four or five years, homeland security may be fairly tight with all the hurricane losses we've had.
Yeah, and more to come today while we're sitting here. Yeah, no, it's hard to know. I mean, we can't really predict any of that stuff, but, anyway, so. Any other questions?
Two more questions. Tim, any thoughts?
Doug, you can ask somebody.
Larry?
I don't know nothing.
We've been talking about a justice center.
Any ideas, any questions you want to ask?
No, we've been through this for twenty years.
Well, what do you wanna do?
Well, the justice center we talked about last time, when I was still working with them, we had eighty percent grant money for. But that included NRDC, homeland security, a lot of those other agencies that don't have money now that did that.
So what stopped, what way, where are you getting?
We're still talking about it, aren't we? Although realistically, the five million dollars, I hate to say this, but is reasonable.
Is what?
Reasonable. That's a reasonable.
Oh, yes, oh, yes.
But you're getting a shell, you're not getting anything inside it. That's what you're shell.
You're gonna get sixty percent done, twenty to forty percent shell. When still you got the, maybe I'm wrong, but it just seems to me bricks and mortar are cheaper to buy now than they're gonna be down the road.
I don't disagree with you at all. Construction price has not gone down. I've been an architect for thirty years. I've never noticed that down or despite. So, even during a recession, it seemed to keep going up, so. Yeah, I think, I mean, I think the real question, and we did address this, and then, you know, Jeff, I told Brittany, I said, take that other courtroom out. If you need that other courtroom, then my numbers are skewed low. But I didn't think coming here tonight and saying, yeah, if you spend eleven million dollars, you can have everything you want, was really a satisfactory answer. No matter what we say, if it's five million dollars, you're probably talking about the town coming up, or the county, excuse me, coming up with half of that money somehow. Whether it's through loans or, you know, sales tax, whatever it is you're gonna do to do this, it's painful, and I get that there's, I'm actually surprised, can I just, how many people think this is a good idea versus how many, how many people think that we should, that there's a need here? So I'm actually surprised, because usually the people that show up at these meetings are the people that don't think this.
That was why I showed up.
Okay.
Because I expected you to be in that twelve million dollar range. I did not expect you to take a reasonable, rational approach, because nobody ever does. So thank you for that.
And the numbers he has aren't that different than we had as a drive-by numbers from the other options.
How much could we, we have money coming from underfunded courthouse.
There's a hundred and forty-five thousand that we haven't touched yet because we have to decide on a direction.
But that's planning money, isn't it, Donna, or is that? Yeah, so it's possible that some of that, that underfunded courthouse would pay for part of that building.
We may get another million dollars, I don't know. They kind of figure planning is what, ten to twenty percent of your cost of the project. So as we add those figures, you kind of give an idea, but I think where we are, I think we agree on this. First of all, tonight, I wanted you folks to have a chance to see the issues that we're facing with from another set of eyes, and to address some of the issues. Whether these dollars are on the mark or they're off, I think comparatively, they give us a place to start from to compare the three different options that we have. And then from there, we have to start to say, okay, sit down and what do we need? You know, what we threw out there for our first assessment two years ago was looking at, you know, down the road ways, and that we do feel we're probably gonna need two courtrooms before too long.
And you may be right.
Because as our councilor offered, they don't have to be the same size.
What was the construction cost for that initial assessment?
They were looking at, I wanna say, six point eight million, and that was just for the courthouse.
For the courthouse, right. So the courthouse, so six point eight million dollars. You have a perfect state-of-the-art courtroom, I'm not arguing about that. You still have the sheriff's department that's deficient, and I don't know what we're doing with the county administration offices. So, as an architect, what I'm saying is you need to work backwards. Don't, now we've seen the pie in the sky number. We've seen if you add, if you do, soup to nuts, everything that you could possibly want, it's gonna be a lot of money. Let's look at what we can afford, and now try to see what we can give up or what we can, what we can combine, and think about how we can actually make this a powerful moment. Because eleven million dollars or ten million dollars, I know we're not, that's not gonna be anything.
But I know next week, we're actually meeting with the underfunded courthouse people. Lisa, I don't know if you know Lisa Rowe, and she's bringing in a group of people, architects. And we're meeting with the other architect to try to get some kind of planning, so.
Well, when they throw us under the bus and say, you can't do that for eighteen thousand square feet, then you guys call us and we'll design you a building that is in the eighteen to twenty thousand square foot range that gets you eighty-five percent of what you want. And that's, I can never promise you a hundred percent, because that's where, that last fifteen percent is frankly where we go from utilitarian to optimal, really. And, but I think you can get there. Now, I just wanted to mention one thing. If you get money from the underfunded courthouse people, let's say it's a million dollars, that counts as part of your match with DOLA. So that's important to know that. So, if you get a million from them, now you're halfway to your DOLA match, so, and I, you know, yeah.
Now, you've been in this public design, public building design for quite a while. What do you consider an optimal lifetime of facility that you design?
Well, I think your twenty-five-year lifespan is exactly the right number. I think that's right. And I think it is important to look at the building of the future when you're building. And so I don't, I think you do need to assess your courtroom stuff, and having me sit here and say, you can only do, you can get away with one courthouse, is somewhat foolhardy. I get that. But I was really thinking about building a building that you might be able to out-on too easily. If that, I didn't realize you're at ninety percent. Would've been a good question to have asked, but I didn't know. So I'll follow my sword on that one. But I also think that we're moving into a different era, and it's important to note that there's gonna be more digital stuff. Already, a lot of judges do stuff, arrangements by video and stuff like that. And so I'm wondering how that's gonna impact everything else. We've toured a police facility in Woodland Park where they built an equipment room, a communications room that was probably twenty by twenty, because that's the size of the equipment that they needed when they built the building, which was about fifteen or twenty years ago. And now the equipment fits in what you and I would call a coat closet. So where are, you know, so there's sometimes, some things are actually shrinking. And so we need to, it's great to think of the functions that we're gonna have, but let's also think of what technology's gonna bring and save us in terms of square footage and stuff like that. I, so, yeah, the twenty-five-year plan is exactly right. And like I said, I have really talented designers that if nobody can come up with a building that's eighteen to twenty thousand square feet, call me, I promise we'll do it. Right?
Okay, do we have anything else for these folks? I assume you're driving back tonight?
We are, yeah, she's got class in the morning.
Anybody else? Well, I would like to compliment you on what you've accomplished, your force.
I just hope it, I hope it just leads to the broader discussion.
But having, but having worked with graduate students for a lot of, long time, twenty years almost, I'm especially impressed with what this young lady has pulled together.
She's the A-team.
She has a grasp of the project tonight. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. You guys have a great evening.
Do we have any more business to come before the board at this time?
Thank you for coming out. Your input is valuable.
Jeff, what do we need to do with Christie so that she knows this project, that she will respond?
Well, I'll send her everything that we've talked about tonight. She and I will be in communication tomorrow for sure. And I mean, I think, I think we're, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna actually wrap up. The report that I sent you digitally was a little bit more lengthy than that. We're gonna fold in the last chapter on public engagement, which we're supposed to do, and then I'll send you a final report, and then you guys.
Do we have any business right now? Not a declare the meeting adjourned. Now we're carrying on with whatever conversation we need.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, folks, for being here. This Board of County Commissioners, Tuesday, September the nineteenth, at twenty seventeen. We will start, if you will please, by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Katnick?
Present.
Commissioner Lloyd?
Present.
Commissioner Prince?
Here.
Attorney Clint Smith?
Present.
Clerk to the Board, Kelly Camper, present.
Okay. At this time, I will entertain a motion to recess the Board of County Commissioners and to reconvene as the Board of Health.
So moved?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries. As we proceed as the Board of Health, I'm going to ask County Attorney Clint Smith, if you would, to maybe assist us in what you'd like to conduct as part of our session.
Yes, I would. This is essentially, the Board of Health is sitting as a fact-finding board for purposes of what we're gonna do today, and then after we've heard the evidence, I'm going to advise you on the law and make my recommendations as to what actions I think might be appropriate as the Board of Health. So you're Mr. Carpenter, is that correct? All right, Mr. Carpenter's present, pursuant to a summons that was served on him and Jackie Hobby is also here. And I'm gonna, the way I wanna do this is just proceed the way we would. This is an administrative proceeding, by the way. It's civil, it's not criminal. But I do, fortunately, as a retired judicial officer, there are certain rights that I have that carry over, and one of them is the right to administer oaths. So I'm gonna ask that Mr. Carpenter and Ms. Hobby both stand and raise their right hands. Do you both swear or affirm that any testimony you've given this hearing will be the truth today?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Carpenter, why don't you come up here and have a seat?
We don't bite, we just look like it.
All right, let's establish a few things. So your full name is Terry Rogers Carpenter Jr., is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And you own the property located, you own the property located at two fifty-two Ferris Drive in Custer County?
Yes, sir.
According to the records, you purchased that back in March of two thousand and thirteen, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And you, at the time you purchased it, it was an unimproved lot, right?
Yes, sir.
And you've since built a structure on there?
Yes, sir.
When did you build that structure?
The first year I was here.
So it's been there for four years now, is that correct?
Yes.
You obtained a zoning permit to build that, is that correct?
Yes.
I may jump back and forth a little bit and ask Ms. Hobby some questions. Ms. Hobby, that zoning permit then has never been closed, is that correct?
Correct.
Why has it not been closed?
Waiting for plumbing and electrical final, and also the inspection on a septic system.
All right. Mr. Carpenter, you agree you've never installed a septic system there, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Why haven't you?
You want the whole story?
Sure.
Hey, it started when I first got here. When I first got here, I came to get permits to build my house, put my septic in. I was told I could put my septic in myself if I came and took a test. So, to come back and take this test, every time I came back, I got the runaround. I come back again, I get the runaround. Eventually, I ran out of money. I stopped living in the house. I had to move into town. And I still do not have the money, because there is no, business is here to employ people. I mean, if you're not an automotive mechanic or a construction person, you're not gonna find a job here.
All right, well, let's talk about that. Are you claiming that you do not live in that residence, in that structure?
I'm not living in the structure.
What's your definition, what's your definition of living there?
Twenty-four-seven occupancy.
You stay overnight there, don't you?
No, I don't. I've been staying in town. The only ones that stay there are my animals. I have no place to put my stuff. I had to get all my stuff out of storage, because I could no longer pay storage to have somewhere to put my stuff. And that's what the house is used for.
What's inside there?
All my stuff.
Beds?
Beds, couches, everything.
Okay.
I cannot pay storage fee no more. I had to have somewhere to put all my stuff, and then I moved here from Texas with knowing nobody here, didn't know a soul, and moved up here and just tried to get to a place where I could be by myself and get away from my stress that I left Texas for. And it's just coming back. Yes, sir, it's coming. Yes, I'm married. Thirty-five years.
For how long? I'm sorry, I didn't.
I've been married for thirty-five years.
Okay, Victoria Carpenter?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so she's came here with you then, I'm assuming. Is that right, when you bought the place?
And my son.
Because you talked about being alone, but you're, so you're claiming, you're claiming that you do not stay overnight there at all.
I have been now, because y'all made me put a septic, I mean, a porta potty there. I have the last couple nights. Having a porta potty is the same as having a septic.
No, it's not.
Yes, it is. It's a plastic tank up on the ground that gets cleaned out once a month, instead of twice, two years or three years, whatever it takes to get them cleaned out. It's the same thing.
Okay, I'm not gonna argue with you about that right now, but what I need to determine is, I don't think you're being truthful with this board when you say that you don't occupy that place.
You got somebody watching me twenty-four seven or something? You're going by what, the opinion of two neighbors that don't even like me.
All right, well, but the neighbors have made complaints about you staying there. All right, so when you're there, when you were served with the summons to appear today, what time of day, there was actually nighttime, wasn't it?
Yes, it was after work when I went out to feed the dogs. I get off at five o'clock.
And there was smoke coming out of the chimney, so you have a stove in there?
Yeah, it's a house.
Okay, and why would you have a fire going if you just went to feed the dogs?
To eat supper while we were there. I can't heat up some hot dogs or make a hamburger, something simple.
You're, okay, let me switch gears for a minute. So you say, you say that you're staying in town. What's the address?
Why do I have to involve a third party?
Just answer my question, please. I'm not debating this with you. I'm asking you.
Derek Sumter.
What?
Derek Sumter.
Derek Sumter, what's his address?
Five oh five Broadway.
Is he a friend of yours?
Yes, I work with him.
You pay rent for anything to stay there? Does Ms. Carpenter stay there with you?
Yes.
And you're saying every night?
Yes.
Do you have a room of your own there?
We sleep in the living room.
Anybody else stay there?
Derek.
Anybody else?
His family, his daughter and his son.
So, when you sleep in the living room, what do you use for, I mean, do you have a bed there? You sleep in a sleeping bag? I mean, what do you do?
Sleeping bag, pillow.
Is all that there? I mean, if we, if we went there, if Ms. Hobby went there, I went there and checked, you'd see it right now, evidence that you're living there?
I don't know.
Well, clothing, you keep your clothing there?
I can't just leave things out in the middle of the floor.
You keep your clothing there, right?
No, clothing's at the house.
You're seen at that place late at night, you're seen there early in the morning, and during the day as well. I mean, the witnesses that have complained about this say that you're living there.
Okay, well, where are these witnesses then? This is, if this is what it's all based upon, then where are your witnesses?
The witnesses have already presented evidence previously. Now we're here. And while we're talking about this, and something I guess I need to bring up, because they are witnesses, this is a proceeding. because they are witnesses, this is a proceeding, a legal proceeding. It's important for you to understand there is a law protecting them from any sort of harassment or intimidation or threats. If you should take any kind of action against the witnesses- All right, let me finish explaining this because this is important. If you take any sort of action, that is a felony and the sheriff could arrest you and you could be prosecuted for it. So even though you feel that you're being harassed by your neighbors or being picked on by your neighbors, you don't take any action against them because they are, they fit the legal definition of witnesses. And they have made complaints, and not just complaints at this level. You know, Ms. Hobby has been dealing with this problem for years, trying to work with you. And now the complaint has gone up to the state level and she's under pressure. This Board of Health is under pressure to get this issue resolved. So, at one point, Ms. Hobby was told you were waiting on an inheritance.
Yes, it's on, it's on the various form that I turned in.
Well, I saw a note that you were waiting on an inheritance. Tell me about this inheritance.
My dad passed away. I inherited everything of his.
Give me a year. When did he pass away?
Oh nine.
All right, go ahead, tell me more about it.
And I got, everything of his became mine. I happened to be looking through some paperwork and found that I had looked over an IRA account that I have not collected. And that's what I am trying to collect.
Do you have a lawyer handling it for you?
Yes, sir.
In Texas?
Yeah, no, not in Texas, here.
Okay, can I ask the name of the lawyer?
David Thompson.
Where's he?
Salida.
You got any correspondence from him or anything that you could share with us?
Just emails.
And what's the status of it?
I'm still waiting on him. And I don't, I don't know what it-
Well, you had talked about that inheritance some time ago. You also had indicated, in some of the paperwork you submitted to Ms. Hobby, that you were going to have the septic system in by the end of winter.
Yes, my permit's not up yet. I still have time on the permit.
Now, this was last year. You were talking about the end of winter last year. All right, so what's your plan? Let's just cut to the chase. What's your plan? For getting a septic system in?
I need $5,000 to get a septic put in. Septics are not financed. I do not have $5,000 to dump on the septic. I'm waiting on my inheritance to try to get this septic taken care of.
How much money do you expect to get from this, if that?
Well, it's $25,000 at twenty-something years' interest.
But you don't have any date at all where you might expect this to happen?
No, this through a lawyer. Lawyers take their time.
Well, as far as, I understand you've kind of run out of time here. Ms. Hobby has worked with you as long as she can and she's just been put off and there have been delays. And the evidence, at least that I've seen, is very, very strong that you are living there. So, this friend of yours, I'm sorry, Derek, is that Derek Sumter? I mean, if we talk to him, is he going to say, yes, you're sleeping there every night?
Yeah, he's at work today.
And the neighbors that, you say you said you work with him?
Yeah.
What do you do?
Stucco. Seasonal work. The only thing I could find to do.
Do you have any other source of income?
No, I don't.
How about your wife?
No.
What does she do during the day while you're at work?
Visits friends in town.
She doesn't go out there herself?
She comes in town with me. We got one car.
There's another vehicle parked there. Is that not run?
That truck's not run for a long time. Motor and transmissions are shot.
Does that look like a Suburban or something like that?
It's a Suburban. It's an eighty-four Suburban. Yeah, the transmission's blown, the engine's blown.
Prior to getting this portable toilet from Oak disposal that you have sitting at the property now, what were you using out there?
I wasn't because I wasn't out there, except to take care of the animals and come back in town.
And have dinner out there and keep your clothing there? I mean, you had to go there in the morning to get your clothing to go to work or change clothes, things like that?
Yeah, I got to go out there to feed the dogs anyway, so.
How many dogs?
I have down to two dogs. I've had two dogs pass away since I've been here. And also have a cat.
And you just leave them locked in this structure all day?
Yes, one dog, one dog's locked in a cage to keep her separated from everybody else. And the little dog and the cat has the run of the house.
And you call it, you call it a house? And I saw it was referred to as a cabin, but a cabin or a house?
Whatever, cabin, house.
All right.
It's twenty by twenty-four, so I don't know if it's even big enough to be a house.
Can you make other arrangements for those animals so you don't have to go to the property for any reason?
Yeah, I can pay $20 a day for each one of them at the kennel.
Have you ever considered the possibility that maybe you just can't, aren't equipped to take care of animals right now? And consider giving them to a shelter, a no-kill shelter that would find homes for them or take care of them for you?
No, but I sure am reconsidering my move to Colorado.
Well, the reason I'm asking these questions is because one of the options this board has and it's, I believe it's something I'm going to have to recommend, is that they issue a cease and desist order. I mean, they'll have to make a determination based on the evidence they've heard whether or not there is occupancy staying overnight at that house or cabin. But it would, I think one of the recommendations I'm going to make here is that that, that structure actually be sealed, that there be a padlock put on the door that you cannot go in there for any reason until the septic system is taken care of. That would mean you would have to move those animals somewhere else. You understand what I'm saying here?
Yeah, you're just draining my pocketbook more.
Well, not if you decide to give them away to the shelter. I'm not, I mean, that's tough for pets. I'm not advocating that.
I'd just give my wife away too, then.
Well, I'm not quite sure if I follow the reasoning there, but-
Do you have pets?
If the animals, so your friend Derek is not going to let you bring the animals to his place?
No, because they have a little dog there and my dog will eat that dog up.
Well, the only way that I can see, if you don't have any sort of a plan to get this done within a specific amount of time, is to actually have that structure sealed, to have a padlock put on the door that only the sheriff and Ms. Hobby would have keys for. And so you could not, nobody could go in there and use that until it is brought into compliance with the health regulations, which do require a septic system. A portable toilet can be there for a limited period of time under certain circumstances, but it's not a substitute for a septic system. I'm going to ask the commissioners if they have any questions at this point, based on what I've been asking and what Mr. Carpenter said.
I have a question, sir. Can I, can I make a quick statement first?
Sure, sure.
I know Mr. Carpenter and I know his wife. They've both been customers in my store. I'm not sure, but the name of David Thompson. I'm not sure whether I recommended David Thompson to, I did. Okay, I thought I did because I recommend a lot of people to David Thompson. And I feel that, and his discussions I've had with Mr. Carpenter or Ms. Carpenter have been not in conjunction with this. So I feel that I can be unbiased and continue to act in my capacity. My question specifically is, I'm looking at a picture and there's, I see your house and I'm looking at two cars, a red car and the Suburban we just mentioned. I also see a white, looks like plastic square on the outside of your house. Do you know what I would be referring to? And I said, do you want to see the picture or do you know what I'm referring to?
I know what you're talking about.
What is that?
It's greenhouse.
It's what?
A greenhouse.
What, what do you grow in this greenhouse?
Plants, tomatoes. What does it matter what I grow in? What does that have to do with this?
I'm curious because we've heard that you, at times, had used that as a location where bodily functions take place. And I'd wanted to know if you would confirm. And I confirm that you used, it was toilet facilities out there.
It's a greenhouse. I never, I never used it as that. It's got a padlock on it now, so.
Okay, I don't have any other questions at this time.
You just, I'm going to refer to the fact that you said you were supposed to be taking a test. What were you referring to with regards to septic system?
Installing my own septic.
And you said that you got incomplete answers every time you came back? And what were you referring to?
To take the test so I could get my septic going.
But where were you taking the test?
Zoning and planning office.
Here.
Yeah.
Jackie, can you confirm that?
No, I don't know what Terry's talking about. Terry, was it the, was it the $50 to take the test? Was it Elizabeth not being there? I don't understand what the problem was.
It's just every time I came, it was, oh, Jackie Hobby's not here, you can't take the test. Or she's out with getting a tooth pulled, you can't take the test. It just kept going on and on and on. Every time I come back, I got a different excuse. And they never let me take the test so I could get my septic installed.
So, I just want to confirm-
Because I wanted to do it all on my own.
Okay, but when you say "they," are you referring to Elizabeth French versus Jackie Hobby? Is that who, the "they" you're referring to?
The "they" is their office. There's two people that work there, so I can't, no, I don't. Sometimes the secretary was there, sometimes Jackie was there. That's the "they," is the two of them. There's only two people that work there, isn't there?
I'm just trying to get a confirmation from Jackie Hobby that this occurred multiple times.
I have. This is the first I've heard of it. Terry, I, I didn't even have any record of that in your file.
Have you had other people come in to take this test?
Yes.
Something rarely routinely done?
Mm-hmm.
And what does the test entail?
It's a higher, yeah, it's a higher question test. And you pay $50 and you get the books and you get to go home and study on the septic rates of the state and the county. And you get to fail it twice in one year, but we don't let you take it again. You have to have a 75% score and it's not open book.
Okay, so you're saying from March of 2013 until now, this test-
It was all the first year because we came originally staying in an RV, a thirty-foot RV. We were run out of that RV in the wintertime because we woke up with icicles hanging inside the RV. So I went in and we started staying in town with other friends, not Derek. It was other friends and Derek only came here a year ago.
So, I'm just going to reiterate what you're saying then. So from March of 2013, you're saying you went to the planning and zoning office to take this test several times in the first year and you have no recollection of this? But that's all I want to-
Terry, do you have a receipt for the $50?
No, because you never got me that far.
And it was at me?
It was your office. I mean, you're in charge.
Their question was, was it her first person to talk to or was it the other person?
It was, Jackie Hobby was the first person I ever talked to here. I hardly ever talk to the other secretaries.
This would have been in '09 you started?
No, it's thirteen.
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 '09 was when my dad passed away.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry. You moved here in thirteen. Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, that's all.
Terry, do you remember paying your $50 fee?
No, like I said, we never got that far.
Okay.
Well, if I may.
There's another piece.
I think I'll call them in a few. First of all, I call you Terry, do you mind? You can call me Bob. I guess I have some understanding and some empathy for what you're going through. I personally have been through some good times and some very, very tough times. And I know that there's times that money is just, isn't there. I also feel that you're probably under a whole lot of stress from lots of angles. And if you are, I can appreciate that. I've been here, done that, don't want to do it again.
That's why I moved here, was to get away from it.
And, and stress can be really debilitating. As I understand it, now you, you have a property out there that you're utilizing and it's in question as to how long or how much. You have indicated that if you could take this test and pass it, that you would be in a position to install your own septic. Am I, is that, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. And your cabin is small?
I did industrial maintenance for eighteen years, so.
Pardon me?
I did industrial maintenance for eighteen years, so yes, I have the knowledge to do it.
So you have, you have the knowledge and you have the background to, given an opportunity, when you pull everything together, you could do it. You would have to buy some resources. I understand you'd do all of this with pick and shovel or by your back or whatever. But you're going to have to have some physical holding tanks and so forth. Would you be in a position to acquire those?
Well, I've been trying to work with Vernon Collins. Vernon Collins offered me, if I could come up with $3,000 to pay for all the, the tank and all the pipe and everything to install it, that he would work with me with the labor. But still, that's $3,000 that I don't have at this time. I've been kind of hoping his lawyer would have got going a little quicker on this IRA so I could have this money and get this stuff done and get this all out of my way, out of my hair.
Well, and that's, states and settling the states are sometimes very challenging.
Yeah, and plus, since I've moved up here, well, three months before I moved up here, every law has changed since I've been here. They keep changing it and changing it and changing it. I just can't keep up. You know, it's, it's set up for, nah, I'm not going to say that. I'm not going to say that.
Well, we have a county that, we have a lot of people here that have lots of different backgrounds and lots of different stressors in their life. And I fully understand that. There's a certain amount of peace that can be acquired from being out there where you're not really crowded. I fully appreciate that. Same time, when we get into a situation where we have some violations that we have to, my attitude is we have to try to figure out how we can fix this. Now, that is at the state level. It's a little different ballgame than it was when it was at this level. And I guess I'm, I'm wondering if, if we- How long can that porta potty sit there?
There would probably be a determination that the Board of Health could make. And then I would have to just tell the state that we are working towards an end. It would be up to the state. Like we said, it went, it escalated out of our level to the state level now.
Okay, what, do you anticipate any challenges with the soil out there when you put in a septic tank system?
No, I've already done per test. Per test's been done. Soil's fine.
Okay. Well, that's my last question.
I, I would like to just, Clint, what is your recommendation for the commissioners to move forward with this?
Let me give some of this stuff to Jackie. She was getting the, this is part of your file also. I need to ask a few more questions first on this. Mr. Carpenter, where do you get your mail?
From the mailbox.
So you have a mailbox there?
I established residency when I first got here. So I had to stay for a PO box.
Do you have electrical power at your house?
Got solar power.
Okay.
But it's only a small unit, just long enough to run the lights.
All right, so there are some lights that just work up?
Just one lamp.
Not a generator or lanterns or anything? Okay.
I have a small solar system with one lamp.
And it's a wood stove in there?
Yes.
You use that for cooking as well, then? Is that what I?
Mostly for the heat, mostly to keep it warm, warm it back up in the house, because the house is not finished, and the house gets really cold inside. And my wife's always worried about the animals being too cold.
What's, how many rooms are there?
It's...
Or is it just one big room?
It's divided into two bedrooms and a bathroom downstairs, and the loft upstairs all open.
Is there, is the bathroom actually a fixture, or just a room for a bathroom?
No, it's a room for the bathroom. I have started, the plumbing is, the plumbing is put in under the house. I just don't have it to the septic, because I don't have a septic to push it to.
Did you build the home yourself?
Yes, I built the home. I installed the plumbing.
So I have a note that you, is that your signature on that?
Yeah.
Okay, 'cause that is dated September twenty, twenty sixteen, which is a year ago tomorrow, saying, "I, Terry Carpenter, will have Pat from Little Eagle install my septic by the end of winter." That's what I was talking about. So, that's Pat Kearns?
Yes.
And what happened with those plans? Was that the five thousand dollars?
That was the money that I was waiting for. I had went ahead and got the plumbing permit in anticipation that the lawyer was gonna get this done in a timely manner, and it didn't get done in a timely manner.
Jack, is there anything else you wanted to add to this first before I?
At this, let's do a little quick timeline. Before we allow a property owner to get a dwelling, they have to get a septic permit. Mr. Carpenter did take a septic permit and application out, and he put on it that he would be installing the septic system.
And what's the date on that?
Two thousand and thirteen. It was July third of two thousand and thirteen, and he paid the two hundred and twenty-five-dollar fee, and he does have, at that time, per tests were allowed. At the same time, you can take out a dwelling permit. He took out an eight hundred and forty-square-foot dwelling permit the same date. You cannot take out a dwelling permit without having a septic permit. So then, Mr. Carpenter was notified that he did not have a septic system in that structure, and he paid another two hundred and twenty-five dollars because his septic permit had expired, and he renewed it twelve twenty-seven of sixteen. Then he said that Mr. Little Eagle would be installing his septic system, and he put Little Eagle on it. So at this time, when he was questioned again whether he was living in that structure, his wife, Victoria, had come in, and she gave us the letter stating that she wasn't living at the property, and I said, "Well, you gotta have proof of where you are using the rest, where your waste is going." And they filled out a variance form for a porta potty. The check is on hold, because in the meantime of them getting a variance and giving a thirty-dollar check for a variance for the porta potty, the state had received a complaint, and the state had notified me about the non-compliance of Mr. Carpenter.
And what was the date on that variance form?
The date on the variance was eight twenty-sixth of seventeen.
How long is a septic permit good for before it expires?
A year.
And that's another thing that changed. It wasn't a year when I got here.
Correct. And he is very correct about that.
What was it when he got here?
It was two years when he got here. But the state has changed all their regs two years ago.
Hey, I've got a question. Jackie, you said that he applied for a septic permit?
Twice.
In two thousand and thirteen?
Two thousand and thirteen, when he got his dwelling permit, and also in two thousand and sixteen.
How did he get his dwelling permit? Who issued it? Who gave him the dwelling permit?
I did.
Okay, so that was possibly a mistake on our part where we had, and then you had to notify him because he didn't have the septic inspection. He couldn't use the dwelling. I'm not being critical, I'm just trying to establish the...
No, at that time, you can, and it's still the same rule, you have to have a septic permit before you can get a dwelling permit. And most people, the majority of people, it's a timed issue and stuff, and it goes on in time. But with Mr. Carpenter, as he stated, the money issue, and then he came back in in two thousand and sixteen and purchased another septic permit because his had expired, and paid another two hundred and twenty-five dollars for another septic permit.
Can I ask a question again? And he did that on December twenty-seventh, two thousand and sixteen, so that permit is still valid until December twenty-seventh, two thousand and seventeen?
Correct, if you are not living in a structure.
Gotcha.
Usually, if you're living in a structure, you have got to get that septic system in there by the state roll, and by county rolls also. So, since Mr. Carpenter was living in the structure, that I personally thought he was living in the structure, he had to get another septic permit, and he had, I told him, I said, "You've gotta get this installed," and that's when he wrote the letter stating that Mr. Kearns would be installing it by that winter.
And that was the December twenty-seventh, sixteen you're referring to is when he got the letter from? Okay.
So then, Mrs. Carpenter coming to the office, because that is when the deputy and myself went out to the carpenters and put a cease and desist on their door. Mrs. Carpenter came in and stated that she was not living, her and her husband were not living in the structure, that their animals were, and they would go out and check on their animals. And I told her that we needed somewhere showing that what their waste was going into, which would be a porta potty, because, and so the next day, the porta potty shows up, and then she fills out a variance, and the check is on hold, because that's when the state had contacted me.
We had that septic three weeks prior to when she turned in the variance form.
The porta potty?
The porta potty, I mean.
Okay.
It was not that day. We already had it in.
Okay, you already had?
Because the neighbors were complaining.
Okay.
I'll show you the date.
Do you have a good question?
That's fine.
Mr. Carpenter, it sounds to me like you have a place to stay, you've been staying. So really, the only concern at this point, if the structure was padlocked until the septic was in, made code, the only issue we really have are the animals. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so, I just want to make sure that if we make a decision that we need to padlock your place, you and your wife, who I also know well, will not be displaced on the street, will not be, will have a place over their head in the cold winter. Is that correct?
Baby. All depends on people. Depends on how long they want to put up with us, I guess.
So...
I have no winter work, so I can't rent during the winter.
Let me ask a personal question, and if you feel it's out of line, I retract it. Have you considered maybe taking a lien on the property to get the money to bring it up to code, or somehow found the money that you could borrow against the inheritance you're going to get, or something like that? This is a problem for us. I mean, the last thing I want to do is put a person out on the street. That's the last thing in the world I ever want to do. But we also have sanitary codes that we must follow, and I'm kind of in a quandary right now. I'm trying to help you, I'm trying to figure out a way I can get this to work. Is it possible to get a loan? Put a lien on your inheritance?
I doubt it with my credit rating.
No verifying source of income other than this inheritance source.
May I ask when the last communication was you had with this Mr. David Thompson?
Two weeks ago.
You actually spent?
Now he wants payment, wants me to give him some payments before he'll do anything more to help me.
And therein lies the issue, I understand that.
Well, I mean, all he had to do was collect my money, and he'd be paid, I'd be paid. We wouldn't even all be here today.
Can I make a personal comment? I have a couple of animals, and my animals mean a lot to me. They're like my children.
Sure.
And I don't think that a septic issue should be evolved into Mr. Carpenter getting rid of his animals. I think that, yes, I agree that Mr. Carpenter's having issues and stuff, and I know it's up to the health board of what happens, but that's part of his life is these animals, and I don't think that it's fair that Mr. Carpenter has to get rid of those animals.
Well, it comes down, I think, to where you can keep them. Terry, as an example, I have three dogs. I've always had one or two dogs for the last sixty years, and I understand the importance of them. I understand when you walk in door, if everybody else is managed, at least your dog's happy to see you. And I also find them as a manner of, sort of a way of relieving some stress. So that, to me, that's another issue that we have to try to work around, but I also fully recognize the importance. I think all of us have animals.
And then plus, you said that the goodness of people's heart, of taking him in, him and his wife. Well, we all know that that gets old after a while.
Have you, gosh, I'm sure I can ask this question, Clint. Can I explore if he's applied for any types of assistance or anything?
Sure.
First, are you a veteran?
No.
Okay. Have you had a chance to explore some of the other assistances that might be available to you guys? And I know pride is an awful hard thing sometimes, and it shouldn't be looked at as that way, and you're, people have rights for help, and have you had a chance to explore any of these?
Yeah, I make too much money for any of them.
Okay.
My Medicaid got canceled. My food stamps got canceled. Now I have nothing.
What, you're not working now.
I'm working now.
You are?
Not today, because I have to be here.
No, but I mean, you have...
Yes, I'm employed until probably the first week of November, and then our work stops.
Is there any other type of work that you can do?
I can do anything. I'm industrial maintenance for eighteen years. I can do anything. Electrical, plumbing, hydraulics, anything. But I come up here with the intention to retire and get away from all this stuff, and get away from my stress before it goes too far.
Are you seeking any kind of help with stress?
I am not gonna become a pharmaceutical junkie, no.
Well, I'm not, I didn't mean to imply that, sir.
Well, that's all the doctors are gonna do, is just feed me pills, and I'm not going through that.
Okay.
I came up here to just get out, away. I'm out of town, seventeen miles out of town, nowhere near anybody.
I fully appreciate that, sir. I think that's all I've got there.
Any other questions, Clint?
No. My recommendation would be for the board pursuant to statute, which is twenty-five dash ten dash one oh six. This board sitting at the local Board of Health has the authority to issue a cease and desist order. That was done informally by an arrangement that Ms. Hobby and I have for situations like this, where she's seeking voluntary compliance and cooperation. It's her feeling and my feeling, based on the evidence we have. That hasn't happened, that there is occupancy there, even though Mr. Carpenter denies it. If it weren't for the animals, then my recommendation would be, let's just padlock the place. He has a valid permit until December twenty-seventh, and review it then, and see if he's been able to get a septic installed. But it sounds like it's a real problem with the animals, especially if he has one that's sort of vicious towards other animals, that, you know, it's not something where people say, "Yeah, we'll take care of your animals for a couple of months." So I don't have any good solutions here. You know, we can ask Mr. Carpenter to, you know, honor his word and not occupy that place until he gets the septic system. Give him the variance. I mean, you actually haven't issued the variance for the portable toilet, you haven't?
No, but they paid for it.
Okay, well, I understand. So if you granted it until December twenty-seventh to coincide with the date that the septic permit expires, we could review it then, see if there's some way he can get that done in the meantime.
And, maybe in the meantime, too, there's other avenues that Mr. Carpenter's willing to look at and stuff, and maybe we can work out something, because we don't want him displaced. I don't want him displaced.
Well, the primary question...
We want to come into compliance and stuff, and so I say, let's give him a chance until December.
If he has a porta potty in the interim, that does satisfy the sanitation requirements.
Correct.
And I also have a feeling that, how do I say this? He doesn't have the resources, he's backed into a corner, and it's just getting deeper.
Right.
And if we can find some way to relieve some of that, I think we need to. If we even have to go beyond the December point, if we, you know, if we can start some digging out there, start to show that we're making some progress, I think we can look at it at that time. I don't know, but I feel in this case, and this is his personal feeling, it doesn't impact the health, but I, I think that we have a situation where we have a citizen that doesn't have the resources. And as a result, it kind of goes back to the old, the old laws that really put a pauper in prison. If you haven't got anything, you've got to be able to gather something and have something. And I am, I've had people stay with me for periods of time, and pretty soon they kind of, you know, get like last year's, last week's fish. They start to, you know, bug you. I would, I would personally would like us to discuss if we can find any alternatives, as you've kind of indicated, Jackie, that we can, I think there comes a time that we have to show some compassion.
May I ask, what is the state expecting from your office at this point in time?
State's expecting me to email them and tell them what the conclusion was, but usually they're pretty good, Chuck, at the state. He has to do, when he receives a complaint, he has to do a follow-up, and now that it's in my, then I will do the follow-up, and I will just explain to him the situation of that he has a septic permit, he still has time on it, and that we're allowing him to have a porta potty, and he's trying to figure it out.
And my recommendation would be that the board vote to issue a formal cease and desist order, a verbal order, but not to require padlocking the premises or anything. He can still go to the premises, will accept his word that they're not staying overnight there, to see whether there is some kind of a solution that can be worked out the next couple of months. But, Counsel, if, if he has a porta potty, and my concern is the health and safety portion of his porta potty, as he, I believe correctly said, a porta potty is basically a mini septic system. Why could he not stay there with a porta potty till the septic, at least until the septic permit runs out, since he will then have a septic system or a viable way of handling human waste and have a roof over his head until such time? Is there, are there other reasons why we wouldn't want that?
No, he can, still has time left on his permit. No, he can, still has time left on his permit. I think it would be a situation where the state would, if the state doesn't have a problem with it, I sure don't have a problem with it. I think too, that in the meantime, I think that if Mr. Carpenter shows that he's making progress, we need to get him a septic system, period.
I agree with that, absolutely. This is an interim stopgap to help the family, which I absolutely positively want to do. So, Mr. Carpenter, can I ask you a question? Do you think your situation will be any better between now and the end of the year?
If I can get Mr. Thompson to get things accomplished, they will be.
Would you give me permission to speak to Mr. Thompson about this? And, and the only reason I say that is because I did recommend him to you, I know him well, I know he's a good attorney, and I didn't feel it was appropriate for me to help you at the time when you asked me about this.
Yeah, you can call him because he's lost. He doesn't even know what he's doing, I went to the wrong lawyer.
You know, you can always fire a lawyer and get a different one.
Yes, I'm fixing to get there.
Okay, I just want you to know that fact.
I need to go and do a bigger lawyer than Mr. Thompson.
Okay. Because it sounds to me like there is a check sitting out there, we need to figure out how to get in your hands. I think you've clearly demonstrated to us that as soon as you are capable, you will comply with the law. We have a stopgap method to allow this to go on if we permit this porta potty to continue for a reasonable period of time, end of the year, that's what, October, November, it's in us three months. You would think if there was an intestate and you're the only heir, this should, this could be taken care of potentially within that timeframe. I think this sounds like a reasonable solution to me, but I guess the real question is, can he and Mrs. Carpenter live in the house with the porta potty? If the neighbor looked in the window in the morning and saw them sleeping in the bed, and I'm not saying anybody ever said that, sir, I'm not saying anybody, but if, would they be still, would they be not compliant or would they be in compliance? Is what I'm concerned about.
Well, personally, I don't see where there would be any issue because if he has proven that he's getting it cleaned and he has a porta potty, which I have seen, if Mr. Carpenter would be willing to come to some kind of agreement with you and us and sign a letter to the fact that at the end of December, first part of January, something will be done and then we'll see and revisit the situation then. That's fine with me.
If you don't mind, I'd, I'd like to see it happen a month before this deadline because then you're right in the middle of winter. So, I'd rather be proactive than reactive. And I think, given the situation, if you're going to place a phone call to this lawyer, if he doesn't want to proceed with this lawyer, then we'd be giving two months to get something else established. I, I just really hesitate waiting for December 27 to happen and then we're in a, in a bind with nothing being done.
I think we could have an agreement if Mr. Carpenter agreed. You know, the county and Mr. Carpenter would agree that on whatever date, whatever would happen and that would be discussed, but you're, you're the other half of the decision, Mr. Carpenter, why don't you tell us what you feel?
Well, I'd like to stay in my house, I mean, I built the thing and I'm tired of just, my money just going out the window and that wasn't my intention to coming up here, was to build my own house and take care of my own stuff and not just give everybody else my money away. But, I mean, I can get, I can get Vernon out there, I can get the hole dug and all the trenches dug, you know, because his tractor's just right next door to my house. I can get all the stuff dug, but I mean, it's coming up with the money for the parts is the...
I understand.
That's the big thing.
I recognize, we're really trying to help you here.
I'm not saying you're not, I'm not saying you're not.
If we were tough, we would have said, "The law says this and that's what we..."
It's just, and nobody finances a septic here.
I understand.
I mean, it's set up for the rich people and not for the poor people.
Right.
If he's going to do this, you need to approve the plan, I mean, he has to get licensed first, right, still?
And Vern Collins, if he would install it, like he said, for the parts, he just has come up with $3,000 for the parts, Vern's a...
He's licensed, yeah.
Okay.
So you're saying you need two, three different numbers, how many dollars for the parts?
Three, $3,000 and Vernon can put in my septic, he can...
So if you have $3,000, you can get your system in and you can become in compliance?
Yes, I can even put it in myself if it comes to that.
Well, that's what I mean, but I mean, that's...
It's the money for the parts.
The dollar figure we're looking at is $3,000.
It's $3,000. Vernon was the only one that got it low enough. Pat Kearns gave me a quote of $48.50, but, you know, he's one of them, he wants to get paid at the end, in full, you know? Nobody wants to finance anything like that. And that, I mean, it makes it kind of hard for us little people that can't come up with that kind of cash, you know? I'm the only one left in my family, all my parents and everybody's dead. I have nobody to rely on. I have nobody here to back me.
And he's probably very correct in the amount of the cost because he has to have a thousand gallon septic tank and he has to have, the smallest he can have is 15 infiltrators in a trench and now they've gone up to about 30 bucks a piece. And then you've got all that Schedule 40 pipe and that double clean outs that the state's requiring now is about $75, just for those connections. And he's, he's, it'll, it'll be $3,000, close to $3,000 just for the pipe, parts.
That's what Vernon quoted me was $3,000. He said he could do it for $3,000. If I gave him $3,000 cash, he could go buy all the parts and start putting my septic in. His tractor's sitting right next door at my neighbor's house.
But we can't have Vernon dig the hole and have it empty and while we wait, and I know it sounds great because Vernon's next door, he could dig the septic hole, but when you can't put a septic tank in it, we don't want...
What's the difference with the perk hole?
We don't want the hole.
I got an eight-foot hole in my yard.
They never cover that up?
No. I have an eight-foot hole in my yard where he dug perk this.
So, Mr. Carpenter, if, and I'm not saying we would, but if this commission agreed, would you be agreeable to an agreement between the county and yourself and Mrs. Carpenter that we would allow the porta potty to stay on your premises provided it's continuously cleaned on a, is it a monthly basis?
It's a monthly basis.
A monthly basis? And that at the end of the permit period, or the end of this year, that unless this situation, unless a septic tank is either installed or, you know, 75% complete at that time, that you would agree at that time that we would be forced to padlock the premises?
Yes, I would agree to that. Give me the time on the permit at least, I mean, the permit's not up yet.
Now, if we get to going on this, and we come down and we're making progress, Jackie, we got, let's just say we've got the tank buried, we've got everything there, but we don't have all of the stuff for the leach field. At that point in time, would it be possible that we might extend this permit?
Of course.
And permit him to still stay in that porta potty, stay in the house with the porta potty for another 30 days or whatever, so we can still try to get the rest of the parts? Would that...
If you make any effort, you get that much farther ahead. It's ones that don't make an effort. If you show an effort, then I think that's great.
The effort would have already been done if I would have had the money.
How many days a week do you work?
Work five days a week. Make like $400 hours a week.
What do you do with the other two?
The other two what?
The other two days, when you're not working.
The other two days, I'm trying to keep my house together before it rips completely apart.
So would you be in a position to do some day work kind of things if we could find something?
Yeah.
Those are the two days that, that money would go towards the...
Yeah.
...septic.
I don't mind, working for what I need. I've worked all my life for everything I needed, so work is nothing.
Is this, is this something that's done by motion? If you're just going to agree to continue this, I think we can just do it informally. If we were going to take some action pursuant to the statute, I'd say we do it by a motion, but if you're just going to agree to give him some more time and not issue a cease and desist order, allow him to stay on the premises, that can just be done informally. I would like to suggest to my colleagues that, based on the conversation I just had with Mr. Carpenter, that we allow him at least enough time through the end of the permit, current permit period, to install, have installed or made significant effort towards the installation of a county and state-approved septic system and in a formal letter of agreement be written with Mr. Carpenter and the county sign stating that he can stay in the house with the porta potty, provided the porta potty is cleaned on the regular basis that it normally supposed to be, to try and help him get that done and then informally, if we can help with additional work or something, we'll all try to do that. This is my recommendation to the two of you.
Donna, your thoughts?
I'm okay with that, but I'm going to just reiterate what I said, I would rather not know on December 27 that we're in a different position. I'd like to know that in advance, so maybe like November 27, we have an update on where things at Carpenter.
I think we need to know where we are on Vernon, routine basis. I see two things, we have to protect public health, we also have to be compassionate. And this isn't a long-term solution, but I would like to visit you, maybe Terry, I don't know if I can find anything or not, but maybe something that provides some extra work, some things that if you were willing to do it, that could maybe generate some income for you, help a little bit. I'm also thinking we may not, may not go anyplace, but I have got a couple of people that I'm going to talk to to see if I can convince them to maybe supply some parts at wholesale or to make a contribution of these parts from a, from a firm, from a company basis. If we could get part of that, I see there might be a way, Terry, that we could work this whole thing out.
Well, it's just been rather frustrating, it's like everybody's been against me since I've been here.
I think you've got three people there that I hope you realize that, what, three, we're going against you, we want to try to fix what we can.
I've been trying to fix this since I've been here and...
That's kind of a lonely ride sometimes.
Yes.
And our hands are tied because as a health department, we originally received notice and I'll just tell you that buckets were being used to dispose of human waste and that is a health issue and that was very concerning to us. Once we realized the porta potty was in, that immediate problem was solved. And I think this is certainly a compromise that we all could live with. Hopefully, we can get, you'll be in a position to get this started and working and maybe even done by then. And Jackie, I'd like to thank you for working with Mr. Carpenter and others in the county to try and work it out as opposed to being the tough guy saying, "That's the law, do it or else." I mean, that's not the way we are in Custer County and I appreciate your efforts trying to help this work out.
Okay. I'm in agreement with that, in general agreement, I think...
We'll get a letter written and you can read it and you're not forced to sign it, you look at it, if you don't agree, we'll amend it, but if we don't have an agreement, then we're going to have to reconvene, maybe different.
I also appreciate Donna said that, you know, it's kind of a Scrooge deal, we come down on the two days after Christmas and say, "No." And we need to, hopefully, we'll be...
You know the rule, you know the rule.
Well, but I'm saying, though, if we look in November and stuff, Jerry, we're looking at this stuff, we're...
I don't have any problem, we're following it.
Okay. Is there any other, excuse me?
Just an update to be clear.
Is there any other items, are we comfortable where we are?
No, I think that's fine, Mr. Carpenter understands what the board is offering here and he sounds like he's in agreement with this. We all want the same thing, we want him to get the system as soon as he can afford to get it done. And if you have some help or you can help with the attorney, that'd be great if you got his inheritance and that would take care of a lot of problems for him and ease up that stress. But I think we're finished for purposes of this, so we can come out of the, if you're ready by motion, come out of the board of health.
At this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the board of health and reconvene as the board of county commissioners. I saw a move.
A second.
Move is accepted, any discussion? Motion passed. And now we'll reconvene as the board of county commissioners. I see no other items on the agenda that needs attention at this time. Does anyone have anything else we need to address?
No, sir.
We didn't vote, you had a first and a second, but we didn't vote.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, second. Same, poll, same time, motion carries. And we don't have anything else to come before the commissioners this time?
No, we're meeting at, what, 5:30 today? So are we going to adjourn until then? Or recess, I mean. Are we going to recess till then or are we going to adjourn?
I guess we can do either one, we've advertised both meetings, haven't we, as board meetings?
Yes.
So from the...
We can just adjourn this?
We're going to adjourn and then reconvene. Okay, meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
I'd like to visit a few minutes, Terry, if we get down here, a second.
Jackie?